To the flag, United States Constitution, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the goal of liberty and justice for all.
Roke.
Graham Cassoun.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr, absent.
Here.
Massie, absent. President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval of minutes?
Tonight we have two minutes. Council meeting October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and council meeting November fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Resolution is sponsored by Aldman Johnson for both minutes. Do I have a second? Aldman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Nothing this evening.
For the good of the city, we will ask the police chief to come up.
Good evening. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor DiStefano, the common council, and the police commission for giving me the opportunity to publicly recognize Patrick Cunningham on his recent promotion to the rank of sergeant. I'd also like to thank the family members, friends, city residents, and the various members of the Middletown Police Department that have joined us here this evening to recognize and honor Sergeant Patrick Cunningham. Pat, can you come up, please? For those that don't know, this is Sergeant Patrick Cunningham. Sergeant Cunningham began his career with the City Middletown Police Department on June eighth, two thousand five, after spending two and a half years serving the residents of the town of Warwick as an officer with the town of Warwick Police Department. Sergeant Cunningham's commitment to the City Middletown began very early on in his life as he was born and raised here in the City Middletown. Sergeant Cunningham graduated from Middletown High School in nineteen ninety-five and then went on to earn a bachelor's degree in commercial recreation from East Stroudsburg University. Sergeant Cunningham was recognized as being one of the future leaders of the Middletown Police Department early on within his career due to his professional and proactive style of policing and his ability to constantly perform his duties with the departmental goals and objectives in mind. As patrol officer, Sergeant Cunningham was very active and committed himself to providing the residents of this great city a police service second to none. Sergeant Cunningham's commitment to his duties as a City Middletown Police Officer were quickly recognized early on in his career not only by the rank and file of the Middletown Police Department but also throughout the community. His commitment and dedication led to his assignment as the department's lead police K-9 handler in two thousand six when the police department reintegrated its police K-9 program after being decommissioned for approximately twenty years. Sergeant Cunningham, with his original K-9 partner Ivan and his current K-9 partner Ares, worked tirelessly honing their skills in an effort to be the best police K-9 team in the region. His commitment to his K-9 assignment was recognized on numerous occasions to include top placements in numerous regional and national K-9 competitions. Sergeant Cunningham has also become highly respected, a highly respected police K-9 trainer in which he not only assists in the training of our canines but the training of police canines throughout the region. As a result of his commitment, dedication, strong work ethic, and great communication skills, Sergeant Cunningham was assigned to the department's Neighborhood Enhancement Unit in February of two thousand nineteen as the senior officer. In his new role, Sergeant Cunningham quickly established himself with the members of the community as a problem solver. He attended community meetings and met with residents in an effort to address their issues and concerns, and he found ways to effectively resolve them. As a Neighborhood Enhancement Officer, Sergeant Cunningham was also tasked with addressing quality of life and nuisance issues throughout the city, and in doing so, he not only creatively utilized resources from within Middletown Police Department but he also established partnerships with the city's code enforcement department, the schools, the YMCA, and various other organizations in an effort to resolve issues from a multifaceted approach. Sergeant Cunningham remained in this assignment through most of two thousand nineteen before returning to the patrol division as a field supervisor. Throughout his career, Sergeant Cunningham was assigned various responsibilities to include his two thousand eight assignment to the department's tactical response team as an operator and K-9 handler where he was trained in the use and deployment of various special weapons and tactics. In two thousand fifteen, he became a certified police instructor and began developing lesson plans and presentations to aid in the instruction of police officers on pertinent police topics. He is also certified as a police K-9 instructor for patrol, narcotics, and explosives. In two thousand eighteen, he became a field training officer where he trained and supervised newly appointed police officers which afforded him the opportunity to impart his experience and proactive work style to the newest members of the police department in hopes they would emulate his professionalism, commitment, and great work ethic. As you can see by the numerous awards displayed on his uniform, Sergeant Cunningham has been honored with numerous commendations for his excellence in police work, to include being awarded the Police Officer of the Year Award in two thousand five, two thousand twelve, and two thousand seventeen. He received numerous lifesaving awards for his selfless acts of heroism, and he is also a Medal of Valor recipient for the lifesaving actions he demonstrated during a two thousand seven domestic incident call in which the suspect of said call intentionally shot at the responding members of the City Middletown Police Department, striking one of our officers twice. Sergeant Cunningham has demonstrated time and again his sacrifice, commitment, and dedication to the City Middletown Police Department, and am honored to have him serving in his new role as a patrol sergeant where he will be supervising the police officers in their daily patrol functions and where he can continue to utilize his training and experience to mentor and guide the men and women of the Middletown Police Department. Sergeant Cunningham, your dedication and commitment to the Middletown Police Department is evident, and I know that you have put countless hours studying and working hard to achieve this milestone in your career, and I commend you for your hard work, dedication, and enthusiasm. As you embark on this next chapter of your career, it is clear that you will be faced with new challenges and obstacles, but you have my promise that I, along with all the supervisors, will support you and assist you in any way that we can. I encourage you to stay true to yourself and true to the strong morals and ethics that have led you to your new position. I implore you to strive for excellence in everything that you do and to set high standards for the people you serve with. Lastly, as you continue to work diligently towards achieving the goals and objectives of our organization and towards ensuring the safety and security of our great city, I ask that you remember the oath of office you took swearing to protect and serve the people of this community. At this time, I would once again like to thank everyone that came out this evening to honor Sergeant Patrick Cunningham on his achievement. This concludes our ceremony for this evening. The PBA has extended an invitation to the friends and family of our honoree to join them in the classroom of the police station for some light refreshments. Once again, I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Patrick Cunningham.
Good job, gentlemen. We'll take a short five-minute break so we can get some pictures. Good as city, anyone would like to address the council, please step forward. Okay, no one. Remarks of the department head. Police chief. You don't have to say anything.
Good evening. I actually have nothing other, uh, nothing else this evening. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to recognize Sergeant Cunningham at this meeting this evening, and if nobody has any questions for me, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday, and I guess we'll see everyone next year.
Any questions? Thank you, chief. DPW commissioner.
Good evening, all. It's, I want to congratulate the chief for his department. They're really fantastic. We're very proud of them, and Patrick especially, he grew up right across the street from me. I knew him since he was very little, and I'm very proud of him and what he has done for the city and all his work. Talking about just interrelationship between different departments in the city and how close we are with the police department, right now it started to snow a little bit, so we had some phone calls from the police department saying that certain areas are slippery. Believe it or not, this is how we get our clues, you know, in the middle of the night, two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, even now. So they called us in the police department, they said, hey, some roads are slippery, so we're going to be sending trucks right now, each, one truck in each ward, to salt and make sure that all the slippery areas are addressed. And they help us also with illegally parked cars and their vehicles in the street, you know, extremely important for people to move their cars off the roads to allow our drivers to go in and plow and make sure that they make the roads very clean and safe for you guys, especially during an ice storm.
Should we build the police department assault bill?
Absolutely. The chief personally, he should be responsible for it.
He should have been, right?
Chief personally, absolutely.
Put Sanders on the back of the car.
No, so we sincerely do that. I mean, they help us with code enforcement, everything. It's just ongoing, very strong relationship between DPW and the police department, and we're very proud of that, but reminding people to please stay off the road. It's difficult job the way it is for our men to go and plow and make sure that the roads are clear from ice, especially in ice and freezing rain. Like, we have had a couple of days and the guys, you know, they work around the clock, so please give them a break, get off the road, you know, just allow us to finish cleaning the roads and then you can drive safely on them. I want to also call out the, and thank the sanitation department, remind people of all the hard work these guys do, three o'clock in the morning whether it is rain or shine, freezing rain or ice, they're right there trying to, you know, maintain their footing on the road to try to pick up our garbage and dispose of it. And just want to remind the public how important these people are and how much of a difficult task they do, and they do that when it's ninety degrees outside too as well, when it's, you know, almost very difficult to breathe because it's too hot. They're still out there doing the job, and hopefully we'll be doing some drastic changes, the mayor and the common council, to change all this into a better way of disposing of our garbage and taking it off our street. So please maintain your garbage in the can itself, do not put it, do not put small garbage bags all around it. It makes it that much more difficult for our men to start hunting for garbage, small garbage bags among the snow piles. It's not, it's actually dangerous to our men too, so please help us out, put it in the container, and that's all we ask for, that's in accordance with our code. There's one article in the newspaper today, and you have it before you, there's a council resolution, that is in our, the mayor and the common council continuing effort in there to protect our watershed, and basically this is going to be like the pilot in there, we're going to be purchasing, hopefully, a small lot, buildable lot, on Mill Pond, and the reason behind it is to preserve that lot and not to allow another septic system to be built right next to or close to Mill Pond, although it's going to be built obviously in accordance with the standards and so on, but our vision is to try to protect and purchase as much as we can from the watershed so it will ever remain green, and anybody who cares about the Shuwangan Kill and the purity of the water in the Shuwangan Kill should be supporting, very supportive of these efforts. That will not only benefit Middletown, it'll benefit everybody and all the natural resources that we have, including the Shuwangan Kill. Another item is, we met, I'm just going to update you about, roughly about twenty-seven million dollar worth of work that's going to be happening, twenty-seven million dollars worth of work that's going to be happening next year and the following year. Curbs and sidewalks throughout the city, all the way up to city line on Dulson Avenue where curbs and sidewalks did not exist, so we just met with the end of traffic light and traffic operation, I don't want to get into great details, but, you know, it's millions of, tens of millions of dollars are being involved, so we met with the DOT, we ironed out a couple of things in there to minimize the need to push or move utility poles along Dulson Avenue. As an example, the original design had poles being moved by six inches, a whole line of utility poles along Dulson Avenue, which we did not think it was very productive move. So we met with the DOT, we expressed our concern to them, and they approved it, so we don't have to move all these poles, not us, Orange and Rockland moved the poles for us, and that will expedite the process. We're expecting in January to go out for bid for the ADA curbs and sidewalks, that's about three point six million dollars, and another project we expect to advertise for bid in January is all the city, all the city parking lots in downtown to make them green, incorporate green infrastructure in them, and give them a major facelift. Another thing, we opened the bids for replacing the water treatment plant, pump station, booster pump station, that's an extremely important component in our water treatment plant, and we opened the bids, the numbers were very favorable to us, so hopefully next, within next council meeting, we'll make a recommendation for awarding the bid to the low bidder. Also, we're hoping to move forward, also, we'll come back to, with the recommendation to the council, the mayor and myself regarding the emergency interconnections between us and Walkill, hopefully we can award the bid and fund the project between us and the town of Walkill next council meeting. And there are several other projects in there, I can, I'll stop right now because the chief took a long time in there recognizing his men, so he took, I yielded most of my time to him. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions for the commissioner? Aldman, John Francois.
First, I want to thank you and the street department for taking care of the water main break in the fourth ward. It seems like it's an ongoing situation you guys have been having for the last couple of months or so. It seems like we average in at least four, or six of them a week. Do we still have more water left in the reservoir?
It feels six a week. Thank God it's not six a week, let's be, knock on wood. No, I appreciate it.
Are we still okay?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, seems like, you know, it's like every time I turn around, Nixon is sending a message, we have water main break somewhere in the city.
Yeah, unfortunately, this is the season for it when you have the temperature changes on the ground to start to freeze, and the changes in temperature causes some movement in the ground and within the pipe itself, and many of the pipes are ductile iron pipe, cast iron pipe, they are very brittle, so any shifting in there will cause a crack in the pipe, and that's what our men have been doing. Some of them are even failure in, the difficult ones even are the very slow leaks like the one in Park, Park Place and Star Haven as an example. We've been looking for it for a couple of weeks, and we finally dug down, and we dug down before, they couldn't find it, the guys, and then moved over a little bit, and we found that they were rotting bolts in an old connection in the main. Basically, one bolt rotted, and that's what's causing very slow leak and was killing us to find it, but we finally found it, and we had to replace all the bolts around the fitting, which is not a big deal, but the trouble was finding it. So, you know, the smaller leaks are much more difficult than the big ones, because the big ones will tell you, here I am, fix me.
Thank you, those guys are doing great work.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob.
Yes, sir.
John?
Just want to give you a report on the municipal IDs. Right now, we're at nine hundred and eighty-seven. In the past three weeks, we had a increase in the amount of people that came in for municipal IDs. I'm not sure if it has to do with the licenses or not, I don't think so, but a big increase in the amount that we're getting, just so that that's a good sign. Also, the reorganization meeting will be on Thursday, January second, at six PM, that's already on the website, so you know, and then the next meeting after that will be January twenty-first. So as of now, I know we planned not to have the meeting on the seventh, so we'll see if that changes, but right now it'll be Thursday, the January second for the reorganization meeting, and then January twenty-first. That's all I have for this evening.
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. Remarks of Aldman, Aldman Tobin?
I just like to remind everybody, be careful, I know it's really icy, the temperatures are, it's really cold, a lot of the stuff isn't melting. Sometimes people are walking in the streets, just keep your eye out for people, you know, look twice, we have kids crossing the streets, people working dark clothing, so just try to keep aware, make sure you clean off your car, you know, completely before you drive out, not trying to look at a little hole when you're driving down the street, just to be safe. Thank you.
Aldman Green.
Thank you. First off, congratulations to Sergeant Cunningham. You know, I think we all feel that that was extremely well deserved. I do just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, you know, have a Happy New Year to everyone. With that said though, I do want to point out the twenty-second, I believe, is the Festival of Lights presentation at Run for Downtown Park at five PM. Yep, so we hope we can see you there to light the menorah and kick off Hanukkah. Again, we'll see you all next year. Thank you.
Aldman Johnson?
Thank you. Also want to join wishing everybody a good holiday and take the opportunity to say that I really appreciate working with each and every one of you, and wish you all to have a good holiday season until January second, and we start it all over. Thank you.
Aldman Ray Cassoun?
Good evening. I also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. I look forward to the next term that I start with all of you, it has been a pleasure these years, I look forward to the next one. As for our DPW, Jacob, I had to go out on Tuesday morning because I needed service on my car, so I had to travel and a little of that, and it is extraordinarily noticeable when you leave Middletown in the quality of the roads. So once again, a big shout out to our streets and everyone who helps out when we're in a storm mode, they do an outstanding job. Thank you for keeping us all safe and sound this winter.
Aldman Kleiner?
Thank you. I also want to congratulate Sergeant Patrick Cunningham. He's just been, he was a great asset to the second ward as our, you know, our second ward, part of the second ward team, and I'm sure as sergeant he is, as chief has said, he'll be a great asset to the department. Chief, I should have asked you this while you were doing your remarks, but we have a resolution to uncover the cost of four new electronic speed signs throughout the city. Do we know where those are going yet, or is that just a...
Third ward.
Wait a minute. Do we have specific locations for those yet?
Generalized locations. You want me to comment on them?
Sure, if you would, just so, they're such a great device, I think.
So the speed signs were actually awarded to the city through a grant through the county. We were required to purchase the actual, the mounting devices and have them installed, but we were going to be looking to put one on Dulson Avenue, one on East Main Street, one on North Street, and I can't remember where the other one was, I apologize. It's all sitting on my desk.
No, I...
I wasn't prepared for that.
I was, I should have mentioned it ahead of time, but...
That's okay.
Until I reviewed the resolutions on it.
I'll remember it as soon as I sit down, though.
How are you going to have it?
Well, we could put another one there.
Very good. Okay, thank you. I was going to remind people too, on Sunday, the twenty-second at five PM, the lighting of the menorah, it is a great event that we started, I guess, last year, and it's, actually, I guess it's been two years because we did one at the temple and then we did one downtown last year, and we hope to like double the number of people this year. This Saturday at ten AM is the tax lien sale, if you're interested in picking up any distressed properties in Middletown, that would be the time to come out, and the list is on the website and the list of properties that'll be available, so just a reminder so people don't say, I didn't know that was happening. Well, it's happening and the information's right there on the homepage of the website. Thank you, John. And one thing, I did a slight correction to the minutes and I still screwed it up because I had mentioned Adi Brewer who did Adi's Attic up at the state hospital, and you know, she came, she married a GI and came here in nineteen fifty-two, she worked at the state hospital for, I think, twenty-three years, and then for thirty-some years she had Adi's Attic as a thrift shop, but more as a place that patients could come and really, you know, get things cheap and just get her advice and visit and such, so it was a great... But her name is Adi O-T-T-I, and I added an E on it, so it's Adi Brewer, and she was a remarkable person, she was ninety-nine and a half. So finally, Happy Holidays to everyone and Happy and Peaceful New Year, and I'll see you in January. Thank you.
Aldman John Francois?
Yes, good evening. First, I'd like to thank Officer Regina and Officer Barone that came to our fourth ward constituents' meeting last Saturday. These officers actually came to our meeting on our day, on the day off, and that was very appreciative, it was a big help, especially when we have issues within the fourth ward that we're not so sure about, the officers kind of analyze our constituents of what's going on, and a lot of good information was given out on that Saturday. Thank you to both gentlemen for coming to our meeting, and commissioner, and thank you for DPW, the street department, and sanitation department, everyone, you guys have been doing a great job this year, and also chief, you and your staff, you guys have been doing a great job to the City of Middletown, thank you for your service, appreciate it. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year's Day, everyone. Thank you.
John, you have something?
Yeah, just one thing that I did forget, at the reorganization meeting, you all will be taking your oath, oath again, the mayor will be giving you, just so you're prepared for that, and that's at the January second meeting. Thank you.
Lastly, I also want to congratulate Sergeant Cunningham, getting, I was on a, I'm still on a police commission meeting, police commission, it was an honor, it was probably one of my best moments to see him in the interview, the way he, you know, presented himself and all the officers that came that night made us proud, and to sit there and hear him, born in Middletown, raised in Middletown, we went to school together, we worked together at Davish Pool, we worked together, and then to see him go to college, come back, become a police officer, come back to Middletown and serve the community. I tried, I was trying to throw some zingers in there and making it real tough for him, but my jaw was open the way he was responding back to all the questions and everything, and if, you know, and his mentality is, we're going to make everybody better, and I'm going to train everybody to do everything that, it follows, from the chief to the lieutenants to the sergeants to the officers, and it was a real, real, for me, a proud moment to see the way that it was done, and the officers, I told the chief, I said, please go back, if I had the money, I would hire all of my sergeants, and, but I know we can't do it, but it was a great interview, and I know he set the tone from the next one. He walked in to our interview with his class A's like that, he walked in like that, and it was, it was professional, driven, and right to the point, and I'm excited, and I know he was out there this whole summer, and you can hear, you can hear him on the radio, and the support that he has from his members and everything, it's, you know, from his leadership and from his members, so I was excited and I was very proud. Going, this is our last council meeting of the year, I'd like to bring up what we have done so far as a council. Today, we are going to pass our three-hundredth resolution. Our recreation department was busy this year, we, the naming of the Will Slayer Field, the boxing program that we continue to have, we started a disc golf course at Davish Park, the Little League did some park improvements, the Heritage Trail, if you go on East Main by the switch, you can see them, there's machines, they're clearing, they're working. I want to say that the Heritage Trail is here, it's going to happen. The fire department, fifteen new volunteers joined the department this year, we might be able to hire one from Newburgh as a career firefighter. We purchased not one, not two, but three apparatus, engine one, engine two, and truck We purchased not one, not two, but three apparatus, Engine One, Engine Two, and Truck Three, to, to come here, and it's, pretty soon we'll be here. Two new chief vehicles, some upgrades to the firehouses, lockers, work benches, upgrades on the SCBA storage racks. John, always with the municipal IDs, and John has a hard job dealing with all of us and organizing us all the time, and the council meetings, and Karen, and everybody else, they do a great job, I know with the records, I think we have almost every record now on film and, and archived. Finance, again, back to back to back to back, since the two percent tax cap came out, Don has done a great job with the two percent, staying under the two percent tax cap, passing in our budget. Economic development stayed really, really busy, we've got that ten million dollar grant, you see the work that's being done downtown with the building improvements, businesses are relocating back to downtown, we have restaurants gonna open up, if there is a place where there's a kitchen hood, it will be up and gone by the time it's, it's for rent or for sale. We've seen many, many buildings being flipped and turned into residential, we are out there looking for grant, grant money for a new park and garage, we purchased two buildings, one on Canal, one on West Main Street, we are improving the sound system at the Paramount Theater. Under DPW, Jacob has started a project with the traffic operation project, it's over ten million dollars, changing all the, the traffic lights and making them ADA, the crosswalks, ADA compliance, the water treatment plant, the sewer plant has major upgrades this year, we supported them, and now the project's almost finished. The new Midland Avenue Extension curbs and sidewalks, and then we also have the new, I call it the mayor walkway, from, from East Main Street to the back of Orchard Street. The Police Department, again, we here at all time, hired five new police officers this year, I think it was probably the busiest year, they spent a lot of time with the community. I, I was trying to write down so many community outreach programs, Jump Out Barbecues, Night Out, Too Good For Drugs and Violence, Neighborhood Enhancement Unit, he started a Neighborhood Enhancement Unit, assigning police officers to neighborhoods, that's their cause. Police Department, not only they, they got involved with the community, but they worked on donating bicycles, the PBA donated money back into the community. Promotions, we saw the one today, but he promoted sergeants and lieutenants, sergeants and detectives, and that's all I have rounded up for the two thousand and nineteen. Committees, if you guys would like to treat me for coffee, I'm available for two thousand and twenty, for any committees, assignments, nothing is written in stone, and I know my friend Jacob doesn't like to hear it, but we are gonna start some kind of code enforcement, quality of life committee in two thousand and twenty, it's not a punishment to anyone, but I, I have a plan, and I've been looking at other municipalities, getting more of the public, you know, that, right now, ten years ago, on the council, wasn't a big issue, now that we are keep cleaning up, keep cleaning up, now it's becoming an issue, you know, now it's becoming because somebody has this here, okay, we get it, we call Jacob, we call the DPW. It's becoming, more and more people are taking care of, we had three hundred empty houses in the city of Middletown five years ago, there's only fifty houses on the market today in the city of Middletown. Two years ago, it was two hundred and seventy-five houses on the market, so we're doing something right, it's petty, but you know what, the public wants to get involved, I, I'm all welcome, and just a, a notification, and, and we'll take a look at it, and we'll go from there. We're not asking to oversee any department, we're not asking, but we wanna address some of the issues, and, and look to forward to clean up and make everything better, and that's all I have. New business.
Just one quick question, this committee of the whole, Mr. President?
Not, not sure yet, so if, I'm available Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for coffee and something sweet.
Think Jacob would like to take you for coffee?
Sure. Take us that out back, it's okay. New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson-François to approve the service line warranty program and authorize the mayor to sign the marketing agreement for a period of three years.
A resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson-François, seconded by Aldman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin to accept an award in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, State Homeland Security Grant Program.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the mayor to sign the assessment collector's warrant for two thousand and twenty.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Rodriguez, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to close out capital projects and transfer any unspent borrowed balances due to the debt service fund, which will offset any future debt payments.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green that the taxes, including accrued penalties owed on the formal parcel, section twenty-one, block two, lot twenty-five of the tax roll of the city of Middletown, as shown on the account balance summary, be written off.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer five thousand five hundred dollars within the Paramount two thousand and nineteen budget.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to authorize the treasurer to transfer five thousand five hundred dollars within the Paramount two thousand and nineteen budget.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman, Graham Cusoon, to authorize the treasurer to transfer sixty two thousand seven hundred and forty dollars within the two thousand and nineteen budget to cover the additional costs of the CSEA dental insurance over to the police officers as per their contract.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Rodriguez, seconded by Aldman Johnson-François, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer forty thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-six cents within the two thousand and nineteen budget to cover the additional costs of liability insurance claims.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Green, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green to approve three bids for three surplus vehicles auctioned off through Auctions International totaling six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion?
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green to approve forty-two North Street to acquire an easement over the city-owned property known as Jerry's Park.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Green, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson-François to approve the purchase of property on Guy Moore Turnpike, Mount Hope, for the price of five, fifty thousand dollars, condition the problem approval for a state grant to cover the purchase price.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson-François, seconded by Aldman Kleiner, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner to approve a temporary easement to perform work on two parcels of city-owned property located just south of McVay Road near the I-84 overpasses in the town of Waybeyanda for a fee of two thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Johnson-François, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to approve a contract and authorize the mayor to sign, to renew a program agreement for third-party administrative services with PERMA, with terms and conditions are the same as prior years.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Tobin, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson to authorize the treasurer to transfer a total of fifty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty cents within the DPW two thousand and nineteen budget for boiler installation and repairs to equipment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson-François, seconded by Aldman Rodriguez, any discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin to accept the bid for street materials.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Tobin, seconded by Aldman Green, discussion? Roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes. That is all for new business.
Number three hundred. Audit.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be audited, the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer be authorized to issue warrants for their payment.
Resolution sponsored by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Johnson-François, roll.
Graham Cusoon?
Aye.
Tobin?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Johnson-François?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Report adjournment?